The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, November 15th, 2021, 7:00 PM. I will ask everybody to please stand for the pledge, and Councilman Katanzaro will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Going through the agenda, we do not have a presentation tonight. However, we do have a public hearing. At this point, I will ask our town clerk to please read the notice of the public hearing.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, November 15th, 2021, in the council chambers of the municipal center. One central square in Plainville to hear public comments on proposed amendments to ordinance, Chapter 355, taxation, Article 9, tax stabilization for elderly homeowners. A copy of proposed amendments is on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours in the office of the town clerk, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 11th day of November, 2021.
Great. Thank you very much. Robert, before we take comment, can you just give a brief description of the public hearing and what we're going to be voting on this evening?
The tax stabilization for elderly homeowners was adopted by the town council back in 2007. It was amended in 2011. The eligibility to qualify for that, for those benefits, according to state statutes, was 70 years of age. Recently, statute was changed to allow for it to be lowered to 65 years of age. And so the purpose of this evening's public hearing is to hear public comment on just the ordinance changing from 70 to 65 years, which we're required to do anyhow. But in order to change the ordinance under the Plainville Town Charter, that requires a public hearing.
Thank you for that. Okay, at this point, I will open up the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak to the public hearing, please come to the podium with the mic over here to my left. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? Last chance. Anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will move along. Item number three, minutes of the previous meeting, may I have a motion to approve, please? Somebody?
Motion to approve the minutes of October 25th, 2021, regular meeting, and November 8th, 2021, organization meeting.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Any pose? Motion carries. Announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make tonight?
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
The Chamber of Commerce asked me to report that on December 10th at 6:00 PM at Norton Park will be the Wave to Santa event. For those who attended last year, remember there's a parade through the park of some fancy cars and some fire trucks and things like that. And Santa Claus will be riding in the fire department UTV. And I hear we have a very special Santa Claus this year. Our own councilman, Wazorko, will be playing that role. So that is December 10th at 6:00 PM at Norton Park.
Okay, thanks very much. That was fun last year. I'm happy that they're continuing that, in light of the fact that the Firehouse gathering, I guess that's not going to happen again this year, in terms of children and lighting the lights and all of that.
I was just recently appointed to the Chamber Board. So when we had this conversation last week, the question was, well, are we doing the tree lighting? And it was then determined that that's normally the Chamber of Commerce. And it used to be the downtown merchants that work on that. And they felt it was kind of too late in the year to get that going because I think it kind of got forgotten because of last year. But the plan is to bring that back at some.
Okay, great. Thanks. It is fun. Very good. Does anybody else have anything to add?
I would just like to note that I attended the Veterans Day ceremony this past week at Veterans Memorial Park. This is a very nice remembrance that the Veterans Committee puts together, the various members from the American Legion, the VFW, and folks of that nature come by and say a few very nice words in remembrance of what Veterans Day is all about. So I wanted to thank Dave Dudek and his committee. He always does a very lovely job, and they had a nice crowd. So that did happen this past week. Does anybody else have anything to report? Hearing none, we'll move on to appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. I didn't see any appointments in our packet, but I didn't know if anybody had any that they would like to make, or if there's some that we should be taking care of right now. Okay. Moving along. Board of Ed. All right. Report of the town attorney, Attorney Mastriani. Hello?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council. Do you not have anything to report for tonight?
Okay. Thank you for being with us. And report of the town manager, Mr. Lee?
Yes, I have several items to report on. First one is what I've called the Red Cross Team. During the early morning hours of November 3rd, a fire occurred at the Russell Gate condominiums, located, not surprisingly, on Russell Avenue. As a result, five families, which included nine adults and two children, were displaced. Red Cross immediately sent in an integrated care and condolence team to assist the displaced residents. Funds were provided for their immediate needs, some of which included comfort kits and recovery envelopes. As a result of the fire, three of the units will need extensive repair before they can be reoccupied. And I just wanted to take the time to thank the Red Cross for assisting our residents in their time of need. They're always there when we need them most, especially these types of incidences. So. Next item I have is the Tomlinson Avenue Bridge Project Discussion. The replacement of the Tomlinson Avenue Bridge is finally ready to move forward. Over 10 years ago, it's probably closer to 15 years ago, but over 10 years ago, the town secured a federal grant to pay 80% of the cost of the replacement. Due to many factors, including bridge redesign and additional analysis required by the Corps of Engineers, the project was delayed. On October 21st, nine bid proposals were received for the project, which involves the installation of a twin precast concrete box culvert. The low bid was submitted by Dayton Construction of Watertown in the amount of $1,296,849.50. The engineers estimate for the project was $1.4 million. Town and state consultants have reviewed the submitted bid documents and have found them to be complete. Dayton Construction successfully completed the replacement of the Stillwell Drive Bridge project several years ago, so we have somewhat confidence that they can do this job as well. Town staff is recommending that the town council award the replacement of the Tomlinson Avenue Bridge project to Dayton Construction of Watertown in the amount of $1,296,849.50. And there is an item under new business regarding this recommendation. In addition, the state is requiring that the town council authorize the town manager to execute what they call a project authorization letter for the project. And there is an item under new business regarding this requirement as well. They did not provide us yet with a copy of the PAL, what they call the PAL, but it's a standard letter. And, you know, there's nothing we can change in anyhow if we wanted to. So it's just a requirement of the state. So we need for the town council, if you're of a mind, to authorize the town manager, myself, to execute the PAL when they send it over to us. Finally, the estimated remaining cost for the project is $1.54 million. The town's share of 20% is calculated to $308,156. So that's our share of the remaining cost. The current balance left in the Tomlinson Avenue Bridge Fund is $157,000. The remaining amount, which is $151,158, will be paid for from the Town Aid Road account, which is an off-budget account. And I give you some information about the Town Aid Road account as well. Okay?
That's great.
Next item I have is the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant Program. Governor Lamott recently announced new economic development programs to create jobs and boost community vibrancy. One of the programs is the Connecticut Communities Challenge Program. Under the Connecticut Communities Challenge Program, the Department of Economic and Community Development will fund a wide range of projects that improve livability, vibrancy, and appeal of communities throughout the state while aiming to create approximately 3,000 new jobs. Town staff is planning to submit a grant application, which, if awarded, would provide funds to assist in the infrastructure improvements, which are part of the White Oak Development Project. There is a match required for the grant. Manafort Newport Realty has agreed to provide a good portion of the required match. It is anticipated that the grant request and the match will total around $1.6 million. Town staff will work with Manafort Newport to submit and what they call an intent to apply by December 3rd, and the completed application, which is due by January 14th. It is expected that the state will not announce the grant awards until next spring. So there's, you know, we won't know till probably the springtime of the year as to whether the town will receive a grant. I will tell you that in reading the grant announcement and what the state is trying to accomplish, I think the White Oak Project is something that would fit kind of in a sweet spot, as far as, at least from my perspective is. And I think that, I think we should have a pretty good shot at maybe securing that grant. Next item I have is bond anticipation note sale results. The town recently received bids for general obligation bond anticipation notes totaling $7 million for the period from November 17th until August 16th, 2022. Three bids were received, with the low bid submitted by BNY Mellon with a net interest calculation of 0.4081%. Let me say that again, 0.4081%. It is now anticipated that the town will issue a general obligation bond when these notes become due next summer. The notes and bonds are for the Wheeler Elementary School project and the road bond program. The reason why we didn't bond right now is because we don't have all the numbers in on the Wheeler project, and that held us up from being able to permanently borrow. So we had to do the bond anticipation note out another six months. All right. Next item I have is the fiscal year 21 audit, what they call governance communication. Clifford Larson Allen, LLP of West Hartford, is currently conducting the town audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. They issued a letter dated October 29th, 2021, communicating information relating to the audit. The letter detailed the responsibilities of both the auditors as well as the town. The letter also speaks to what they call the planned scope and timing of the audit and other planning matters related to communication between CLA and town staff. The letter is intended solely for the informational, for information purposes for use by the town council and the town management. A copy of the letter was included in the information package for this evening's meeting. No action is required by the town council at this time. The town audit is currently underway. It is expected to be completed by the end of December. The auditor is required, and we're required to make sure that we make you aware of the letter, what's in the letter, to have some discussion at the town council meeting about, you know, what it's about, and that to be reflected in the minutes. That's just a requirement of the audit process. We did provide you with a copy of that as well, which I think is about four or five pages long as well. But the audit seems to be going well and should be completed, hopefully by the end of this year, calendar year. All right. Next item I have is the Honor Heights Proposed Sewer Survey. Town staff recently solicited feedback from those residents that attended the September 16th Public Information Session, held to discuss the possible installation of sewers in the Honor Heights neighborhood. The neighborhood has 82 homes. Forty persons representing 32 homes attended the meeting. The survey results were that 69% or 22 homes of those who attended the meeting were in favor of the town to continue considering whether to move forward with the installation of the sewers. Again, this is just move forward, considering it, no certainly final decisions. Three residents indicated that they made some repairs to their septic system in the recent past and saw no need to have sewers installed. One person said, stated maybe. Another wanted to remain what they call neutral. Five persons did not respond to the survey. And these are people who attended the September 16th Public Information Session. Based on the feedback, town staff is recommending that some preliminary cost estimates be determined and a potential financing plan be developed for review by the town council. Okay. Hearing no objection. If I don't hear any objection in the next couple of days, we'll make plans to do that. Okay. Next time I have is the Farmington Avenue Tree Replacement Discussion. Last summer, the state DOT removed approximately 10 trees on the west side of Farmington Avenue, which is also Route 10, because they were dying and showing, and some were showing signs of stress. Approximately 20 years ago, the town planted some of these trees that were removed. The section of trees removed stretched from West Cemetery to Robert Street. Several residents have inquired as to whether the town will be replacing these trees in the future. Town staff has provided a potential location for the replacement tree plantings. I think you have copies of larger scale if anybody needs to see that. The estimated cost of the replacement is around $10,000, about $1,000 a tree if we hire somebody to plant them. If we do it ourselves, it may be somewhat less. Could be reduced if the town crews were able to perform the plantings. If the town council wishes to consider the replacement of these trees, town staff will put together a more definitive cost and recommending, recommended funding option. We replaced some trees on Farmington Avenue in the past. There's a history of, I guess, tree-lined Farmington Avenue, especially in that section. So just asking your, you know, whether you would be, want to consider us to do a little further work and to perhaps come up with a recommendation, a specific recommendation.
Are you looking for some guidance tonight regarding the tree project, or?
That would be helpful.
I think it's a great idea. I think, you know, oftentimes, trees are, you know, removed because they're diseased or they're hazards. However, having trees in your community is certainly a benefit, I think, to a lot of, you know, it's the beauty of the community, it's air quality, all kinds of things. So I would be in favor of taking care of that. How does everybody else feel about that?
I'd be in favor.
Yep. All right. I agree. Everybody good with it?
Also agree.
Yep. Everybody good? Okay. You'll do whatever the next steps are and let us know?
Yes. We'll see if we, you know, we could, we have had conversations with the Department of Transportation. They have indicated that they would allow us to do that. There was some question as to whether they would allow us to replace these trees. We straightened that out. You know, we'll talk with town staff, get a more definitive cost of the tree replacement, and then determine what it would cost if we hired a contractor to do it, and what it would cost if we, you know, if we could schedule ourselves. Would take, it would take a certain amount of days to do that, but see if we can fit it into our schedule, then report that back to the council, and let you know, you know, where we might be able to get some funds to pay for it.
Okay.
All right.
Yep.
Next item I have is the Hemingway Street Drainage. For several years, some residents on the west side of Hemingway Street have expressed concerns regarding drainage issues impacting their property. This drainage issue is related to surface and groundwater flowing southerly towards the remnants of the Farmington Canal located in Norton Park at the rear of their property. During most of the year, rear portions of their property are unusable due to flowing and standing water. Recently, several property owners have approached the town for a solution to this matter. Information gathered indicates that when their properties were developed in the early 1960s, a pipe and swell were installed to address this issue. There are no records of the original installation, nor were there any legal documents filed identifying responsibilities for the drainage pipe. Over time, it appears sections of the pipe seem to have failed, and portions of the swell were regraded. The exact extent of the original installation is unknown. However, historical aerial photographs seem to indicate that installation extended northerly from Norton Park to at least Willis Avenue. The most practical solution to this matter would be to reestablish the original installation with modifications. The first and most important modification would be to draft and file the appropriate legal documents outlining responsibilities. Other modifications would involve design elements that would improve the efficiency and durability of the system. It is the engineering department's recommendation the new pipe be constructed of PVC, and that the reestablished swell include yard drains. Any installation is contingent upon complete agreement of the property owners involved. An easement will need to be secured from every property owner involved in the project. The project can only proceed northerly from Norton Park to the point where the first property owner is not agreeable to the easement, obviously. Conceptual design review indicates that approximately 2,000 linear feet of PVC pipe would be needed to be installed along approximately, along with approximately five yard, five separate yard drains. The cost for such installation is to be in the range of $75,000 to $100,000. Costs could be substantially less if town staff were to perform the installation. Should town staff install the system, out-of-pocket costs could be just perhaps the materials that were needed. To town council, we're interested in providing a solution to this longstanding drainage issue. It would be my recommendation that the property owners directly affected pay for a portion of the construction. Town staff is soliciting feedback from the town council, whether town staff should put together a more definitive information regarding this drainage problem. We don't want to spend a lot of time on it. It is on private property. It does not appear to be town responsibility from the records we've been able to review. Nobody's made the case that, you know, the town is responsible for it to begin with. But it is a, is a problem, and it's, you know, faced by, you know, probably eight to 10 residents. I think we could certainly help in putting together a solution. There may be opportunities, perhaps through ARPA, to pay for some of it. I do think because it improves the property owners' properties, that, you know, they should contribute a portion of whatever is constructed. Certainly, that would be left up to the town council to decide if you want us to, you know, do further analysis on this to bring something back to you for consideration.
So I think it's probably something that should be looked into, get a little bit better understanding of the costs. And I know you have some estimates here for some of this, but I would say that it's worth looking into to get the details. And then, I don't know about, I don't know how you would develop a cost per each homeowner, but there's, I'm sure there's a formula that would be fair, that hopefully it would work. I don't know how everybody else feels about it. Is this something you think we should get involved with? It wasn't the town's doing that this drainage system failed, and certainly the developer is no longer here, however. So the solution is, are we going to help out this neighborhood to try and get some things straightened out? What does everybody think?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think we should at least get more information. I don't have a problem helping them out, but certainly if this is private property, you know, looking to work with the neighborhood to try and fix the problems, the appropriate way to go. And I would be in favor of getting more information and some more specific information.
Okay. Madam Chair. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with the statements made. And I was just wondering, too, because they said in the packet that the pipe that burst or broke or whatever was at least 60 years old. Do we have no idea how, who put the pipe there in the beginning, or was it the town?
It was not the town, as far as we know. We suspect it was the developer or whoever developed the property.
Oh, okay. I see. Yeah. But I'm in favor of helping them out.
Everybody else okay with that approach?
I would agree.
Yep.
I would agree.
Yep.
We'd probably start by asking the town attorney to maybe put together, you know, an easement. We could talk about that, you know, some documents, legal documents, and see if the residents would be willing to, you know, sign on to it.
Yeah, I think that would be the first step, is to query the residents to find out, number one, if they're willing to sign an easement, and two, whether they're willing to contribute something.
Yep.
Okay.
To resolve the problem. Because if they're not willing to, like you said, it's going to stop. You're not going to be able to complete the project.
Right. They're all going to have to be, you know, pull in the same direction as we might as well. So.
Okay.
I think they're somewhat motivated because it is a problem.
Okay.
Next item I have is Eversource gas replacement for, for next season, 2022. Town staff recently met with Eversource gas representatives regarding their plans for replacing some older gas lines in Plainville. Eversource is planning to replace gas lines on Canal Street, Strong Court, Church Street, and Bank Street this winter. They're also planning to replace gas lines on Tomlinson Avenue west of Route 10, and on Park Street from Tomlinson to Broad Street. Town staff and Eversource have agreed that any gas line replacements on streets that were repaved within the last five years would be overlaid with the cost being paid for by the gas company. We also agreed to share in the cost for pavement overlay on those streets where the road is in relatively good condition to extend the life of the road. Work is expected to begin in these two areas towards the end of January. Eversource will be required to maintain the roads during construction as directed by town staff. We've been trying to coordinate the last couple of years with Eversource. They've delayed, we've delayed doing some, paving some roads because we knew that they were going to be doing some gas line installations, and they've elevated and brought some, you know, gas line plans, you know, brought them forward a little bit quicker, you know, because these roads were due to get paved as well. So I think we have a pretty good coordinated effort. I think we have a pretty good understanding of whose responsibilities it should be as far as repaving is concerned. And I feel relatively confident that we'll be able to keep the improvements that we've made to our roads up to the standard that it's at, you know, currently. All right. I think it's also better to do some of the gas line installation in the wintertime, primarily because, you know, in the warmer months, you know, people are outside, there's more, you know, windows are open, there's more noise. I think there's less outside, you know, activities being done by the homeowners, you know, during the wintertime. They will button up the trenches, you know, they, you know, they're using a hot mix pavement to, which is a specialty pavement that, you know, helps, helps, you know, not create, you know, potholes, which we saw with open trenches in the wintertime. So they have a pretty good system, and I think it'd be better for them to do it in the wintertime anyhow. Next item I have is the COVID-19 update. Plainville continues to be what we call the red category, in the red category with an average daily rate of 15.1 cases per 100,000 population. This is just above the 14.9 cases per 100,000, which will put Plainville in the orange category. This could be partially due to the lower-than-average vaccination rate by Plainville residents. According to the connecticutpublic.org website, 64.9% of Plainville residents have been fully vaccinated. The state fully vaccinated rate is 81.8%. The US fully vaccinated rate is 68.6%. By contrast, Farmington, which is in the yellow category, their rate stands at 77.6%, and Southington, which is in the orange category, their rate is 70.1%. Another factor could be Plainville has a much denser population than most municipalities in Connecticut. The latest positivity rate for COVID-19 in Connecticut, and I know the latest one was, I think they, they come out with a new daily rate, but the last weekly rate, positivity rate was 2.42%. I think I read something in the paper today that it was up to maybe 2.89%. This is a slight increase from previous weeks, due most likely from Halloween and more indoor activities. This is, this was expected and hopefully will not increase much more than that going forward. Next item I have is the financial debt.
Robert, can I just ask a question about the vaccination rate in Plainville?
Sure.
Is there anything that we should be doing to, when we first offered clinics that were available to seniors, we offered them in various locations, and they were assisted in getting registered. Is there something else we should be doing to make people, you can't make people get this, but increase the awareness, the fact that we are still at a relatively low rate, and we're staying in this red zone, which requires us to do certain things, such as masks and public buildings and things of that nature? Is there something else we should be doing to try to broadcast that fact and educate people how important it is for those that aren't vaccinated to try and learn about this and make it available to them? I'm not sure. It's kind of troubling that our neighbor, you know, the towns around us are doing a really great job, and I thought we were doing a great job at one point, but it seems we've kind of, you know, gone backwards a little bit.
I'm not sure. I mean, every day I read the newspaper. We're inundated with, you know, the latest statistics, you know, the back and forth with regards to whether, you know, mandates, you know, about, you need to be vaccinated if you're in certain types of, you know, if you have certain types of jobs, you have, you know, children now eligible. I will tell you that in breaking down some of the statistics, they're saying that 100% of our seniors have been fully vaccinated in Plainville.
Have not been.
Have been.
Have been. Okay.
You know, we're like at 100% of 65 and over. I don't necessarily believe 100%, but it sounds like we're pretty high anyhow. And, you know, and as, and as you go down the spectrum of ages, you know, it gets a little bit less, and a little bit less, and a little bit less. a little bit less and a little bit less and a little bit less. I'm not sure there's anything we can do in particular in Plainville that would, that would make, that would make a difference. Certainly could, could, could at least point out that that was the situation.
Yeah. I think maybe we have to create a press release or have something, maybe we could have our health district help us with that, you know? I think it's, it's just troubling that this is what's happening and I don't know if there are neighborhoods in our town that need to be directly contacted either through a mail or something to try and remind people that this is still something that is a health problem and people need to look at it, try to get some, a little bit more awareness. Maybe people think we're in good shape, but I think we could be in better shape if we could maybe remind people, put information out there.
Some of, some of the, the feedback I get when I have conversations with people about vaccines is that, you know, is, is a reminder, you can still get COVID even if you get vaccinated. Of course, that's true.
Yeah.
That's true. But seventy percent of the people who are hospitalized right now with COVID are people who are not vaccinated.
Correct.
You know, and, and statistics like that. So I think when you do get COVID, when you've been vaccinated, the, the numbers would show that, you know, it's less impactful than if you didn't have the vaccination. So I think there are people saying, I'm young, if I get it, it's not going to be that bad, you know? So, you know, you're really fighting against, you know, people who feel pretty strongly about, you know, I don't want to have a chip put in my arm for some reason. I know, it's hard to believe.
Well, they put them in your head, first of all. It's not in your arm. But I just wish, I would like Plainville to move, to get, to do, to move forward and, and to, and this will help in, you know, children going to school and everybody else that wants to do things. If we keep, if we keep staying in this red zone, even if it's by a percentage point or two, we're still there and we, I don't know if we can do anything.
We have a, a new health director who, who is starting on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
And she, we can certainly talk to her about perhaps, you know, getting something out to, for Plainville. I could assist her in that as well.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Next item I have is the, is the financial dashboard. I, I know I provided it to the town council. I don't know if you want me to go through it or you just, we did post it on the town website. Everything looks fairly positive, you know, by and large. You know, expenditures are, you know, pretty much in line with past years, you know, nothing out of the ordinary there. I would point out that, you know, according to our municipal solid waste, you know, we're running a little bit over budget if the current trend continues by about, you know, if current trend continued throughout, you know, for the first four months, for the, you know, last eight months, we'd probably go over budget by forty-two thousand dollars. However, on the recycling side, which is a pretty big surprise, and I did put it in red, if our, you know, the, you know, our tip rate right now is, tip fee is thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents, we budgeted that the tip fee would be seventy-four dollars and eighty-two cents, you know, based upon the trends that were there last year. If that continues through the rest of the year, our savings in recycling, you know, costs would be somewhere around ninety thousand dollars. So, you know, let's, let's keep our fingers crossed as far as that's concerned. We are running a little bit behind two-year averages in police overtime, roadways overtime, and buildings and grounds overtime, so. On the revenue side, we've collected a little bit over fifty percent of the revenues that we budgeted in past years. That's been, that's about two percentage points higher than, you know, previous two years. For current taxes, we've collected fifty-nine percent of our current taxes and, you know, two-year average is fifty-seven point seven six. So, you know, on the revenue side, we're looking good. Our fund balance still stands at about fifteen point five eight percent, and that's after the ninety thousand dollars that was appropriated from the council for the middle school pre-referrendum costs. Special funds, recreation fund, expenditures are below two-year average, and these are somewhat skewed by the fact that, you know, COVID and, you know, those kinds of items that have slowed down recreation programs. But, you know, those numbers are, are looking better than they, they were certainly last year, and things are picking up. Robertson Airport's still, you know, positive. Water pollution control, you know, pretty positive. As far as the library expenditures, on the revenue side, some of that has to do with, with the market, you know, the endowments, we get revenue from endowments, which helps to support that budget. And the revenue from the endowments, at least over the next, the last two or three months have been, the market hasn't been all that great. Before that, it was pretty good, so, so that's part of the reason for the, for the revenue on the library side, but we feel that that's going to come back before the end of the year. As far as major projects report, really nothing much happened in October at all, so no, no much different than, than previous. That's all I have, the report. I'd like to turn it over to Matt. I think he has some happenings, and then we'd both be available for any questions or comments for us.
Good evening. Through you, Town Manager Lee and Council Chair Person. Got a couple of events and happenings to report. The first is a reminder about 2022 sewer usage bills. They were mailed at the end of October. The last day to pay is December 1st without interest, so don't forget about those. The next item I have is fall curbside leaf collection is currently ongoing. This will be through the end of the month. Residents are reminded to get their leaves out early. Folks often see the truck go by and then decide to bring them out, so we're just reminding folks to get them out early as they're now falling. And finally, I have senior center happenings. Further senior center events are available on the town website or by contacting the senior center at eight six oh seven four seven five seven two eight. A few highlights are a new program this month called Chair Volleyball. This will be Monday, November twenty-second and twenty-ninth at 10:00 a.m. It's free to all. They're borrowing a creative idea from the South Windsor Senior Center. Folks are enjoy, are encouraged to join in what is being called Chair Volleyball. The only requirement is staying in your chair. It's going to be six players against six players. No volleyball experience is needed. The only requirement, as I said, is to stay in your chair. Volunteers are also needed. If anyone's interested in participating, contact the senior center. Another exciting event is Doggone Donuts, featuring Ryder, the, the pet therapy golden retriever dog, and delicious donuts. Join us at the senior center November twenty-third at 2:00 p.m. for free donuts and a delightful visit with Ryder, the golden retriever. He's a registered pet therapy dog and loves to visit with new friends. And then finally, the annual Thanksgiving dinner at the senior center is returning this year. Last year it was remote due to COVID. Call the senior center to register. The special meal is for senior center members and any Plainville resident sixty years of age and older. Thanksgiving will come with all of the trivings. Volunteers will provide transportation for those who need it. Please register in advance by Tuesday, November twenty-third, and let everyone know when you do register if you do need a ride. For homebound individuals, dinners will also be delivered, and again, volunteers are needed to assist with this process. Other than that, the senior center continues their drop-in activities that we've discussed previously, including card games, quilting, painting, bingo, coloring clubs, and much more. Further information, again, is available from the senior center or online, and that's all that I have for this evening.
Thank you both for your report. Does anybody have any questions or comments for either Robert or Matt with the information they gave us?
Madam Chair?
Go right ahead.
Just real quick, on item number ten under your report, the Robertson Airport ARPA grant, it wasn't in your notes.
Hmm.
And I don't know if we were still going over that tonight. If you did, I forgot.
It's on our list.
Yeah, yeah, I must have missed that.
No, that's, it is in our, you know, we got it.
No, 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 no.
We did get it.
I can do that off the top of my head. We, the, through the American Rescue Plan, small airports, general aviation airports like Robertson Airport is getting monies from the federal government. We're getting thirty-two thousand dollars in ARPA monies and we're, we're required, the council is required to pass a, a resolution authorizing the town manager to sign the documents so that we can get our thirty-two thousand dollars. So that's really what it's all about. Anything you want to add to that, Matt?
No, we've already been in discussions with the FAA on appropriately allocating that and moving forward.
Yeah, so they're going to, yeah, they're going to hand us thirty-two thousand dollars and we're, we're going to spend it.
Nice.
On things to improve the airport.
Correct.
Not anything like what perhaps other towns are doing, but.
Thank you. Anything else? Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Sorry about that. I don't know.
That's okay. That was a very long list you had to deal with tonight, so we'll, we'll let that one slide. Thank you for everything. All right. If there are no other questions or comments for the town manager or for Matt, we're into item number nine, public comments. During this time in our meeting, we welcome the public to come and speak to the council. You'll be given one opportunity, three minutes, and you can come to the podium with the microphone and please state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak? Mr. Grand Boys? Actually, we need you to do, turn it on so that it's recorded with our, our folks.
Andy Grand Boys, forty-two Maxine Road. Before I, before I say what I want to say, you gave me a deja vu moment tonight, eighteen years ago. Council's sitting in the exact same way you sat eighteen years ago. Two Dems and Republicans. The only difference, which is very positive, I actually heard a Republican agreeing with the Democrat tonight. Let's, let's keep that up.
Happens a lot now.
Ooh, wow, I'm missing a lot.
Happens a lot.
Not, not coming here. Okay, what, what I wanted to say is I've lived in town now for forty-five years and I meet a lot of people. And when they ask me, where do you live? I go, Plainville. I'm proud to live in Plainville. Plainville's a great town. Where'd you work? Police Department. Where? Plainville. I'm proud of the police department. I'm proud of the fire department. I'm proud of the senior, I'm proud of everything in Plainville. And back in 2003, we had a lot of issues coming forward. You guys have a lot of issues for yourselves this year. You got to replace the town manager. I'm going to miss you, Robert. It's your turn to buy lunch now. But anyways, you got to replace him, you got to do a chief, you got to do a budget. And I have a really good feeling that you guys are going to be working together, and I hope you could put the Republican hats and Democrat hats in a, in a, in a tray and work together to get these real big items done. So it's Thanksgiving week. I know this is your first meeting before you really have to go to work, so I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving coming up and work hard, get everything done, and keep me proud so I can keep saying that I'm proud to be a resident of Plainville. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to you and your family also.
Thank you. I got to take my meds, I got to go.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Lou Frangos, ten Fairbanks Street. I'd like to start off by congratulating the town council and the newly elected. Good luck in the future. The, I have just two quick, general questions, neither the council or Mr. Lee can help me with. This is the, on the major projects report, Wheeler School project and the park, high school parking lot is constantly on there, and it says percent complete and it shows eighty-eight percent isn't it? I thought Wheeler School was completed as well as the parking lot, so just what is this? If, if I may ask, I didn't mean to say in that sense, but can somebody help me with that?
Well, I'm going to, of course, ask Mr. Lee to help me here. The parking lot is no longer on our list. We have turf maintenance fund, but the parking lot has been closed out or it's been removed from the list, but Wheeler School is, there's still some items that I think have to be resolved.
This is on the?
Major projects report.
Yes.
You got the October twenty-second one?
No, sir, I have September.
I have October thirty-first.
That's right, called up.
Off the October twenty-second one.
It's already wiped off?
Yeah.
Oh, good, then I don't have to worry about it.
Wheeler, Wheeler, we, we're still finalizing some costs with Wheeler. The ONG is putting together some final numbers, so it, Wheeler isn't completely closed out as yet.
Okay. Well, if, just a side note on that, I get this right off of the, my computer from the town hall.
If you go into your computer today.
And it always seems to be, yeah, that seems to be the second month in a row it's a little late. I'm not criticizing, I'm just.
When did you go in and get it?
Last Friday, I believe, was last Friday.
Right, it was, it was in over the weekend.
It's my fault, let's leave it at that. But anyway, the question is answered.
I did the work Saturday morning to put it together.
And I say, Mr. Rosarco, he took my thunder around the Robertson Airport grant because that was hopped over, so I just was a little curious about that. If I may just mention two quick things. The COVID-19 thing, I don't know how you're going to present that, they're having it nationwide and statewide and otherwise. I'd just like to make one comment on it because of my age. I've taken the two shots, I've taken the booster. And the reason I've done that is judging by myself, with age, your resistance levels drop. All right. Now, some people say the vaccine may not this, the vaccine may this, I'm saying if it gives me a little bit of a boost because of the age factor, go for it, because you're playing, God knows you're playing with fire. And the other thing, I have to add a little joke on here. I see one of, item thirteen, town manager search. We don't need one, we got one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frangos. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Dave Albert, Hollyberry Lane. I wanted to talk about the trail, but the drainage thing. You're opening up a can of worms because I could tell you, our neighborhood alone, we got four houses, including my home, it's got the same problems. So be careful before you do it for one neighborhood that you don't include everyone else because I have a problem that I spent ten grand in piping and it didn't put a dent in it. It can only be done by the town, so. The second thing is related to the trail is I don't understand how the town can put trees on Farmington Avenue when people along the trail on Hollyberry lock trees for, you know, to block out what is basically a fistball. And we're told by the state and by the town manager that that problem doesn't exist, but it does exist. So again, I'm looking for a little consistency there. I wanted to talk about the fifty-five car parking lot on Redstone Hill Road related to the trail. The first thing I would ask is, is, was there ever any other lot that was contemplated other than that? I'm going to say.
Another location, Dave? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
If there was another location? Not to my knowledge.
Yeah.
From what I remember, there was suggested.
I can tell you what happened. The guy wanted to sell the property and approached the state. And where I'm going with this is the town has a, a piece of property on Norton Trail where there used to be a road going through it, where you could stick a hundred car garage, parking lot there. I, I don't understand why that wasn't picked. Instead of putting it in the middle of a residential property that it's on a busy road, there's a speeding problem there, there's two streets right across the street within seventy-five yards of the trailhead that people are going to park at, and I, I just don't understand that, to be honest with you.
Do you want me to answer?
Sure, please.
First, the property owner did not contact the state DOT, it was the other way around.
Okay, all right.
That's incorrect.
But I know he was trying to sell it first.
Yeah, but he wasn't trying to sell it to the state of Connecticut.
Okay, that's, yeah.
That's incorrect information. Number two is I don't believe we get anywhere near a hundred cars on the property that you're talking about. There's a lot of wetlands on that property.
But there was a road that ran right through there. I, I know that it's been closed for many years.
Road is, is fifty feet wide. That doesn't mean that you can park a hundred cars on it, number one.
I spaced, you, you can ease.
If you're not going to let me answer, then I don't need to.
Okay, well, whatever.
You just want to interrupt and, you know.
Go ahead, answer.
I'm trying to answer. You keep interrupting me. I don't believe you could fit anywhere near 100 cars on that property that you're talking about. There's a lot of wetlands located on it.
Agreed, but a road ran through there. You could fit more than 55 cars, and it's not in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I mean, it wasn't even looked at. How can you sit there and tell me now that?
Actually, it was looked at.
When? By who?
By staff, town staff.
Well, wasn't that, that's the first I heard of it.
Okay. Doesn't mean it wasn't looked at.
Well, maybe you should look at it again, Robert. I'm just pointing it out as an alternative to putting it in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
Well, first off, it's not in the middle of the residential neighborhood.
There's three houses right by it.
That's not a residential neighborhood.
Whatever.
Okay, is there, your time has expired with your back and forth. Maybe if there's additional information you need, you could speak.
I'm just adding that the town look into that. It seems like you're putting that in the middle of a bunch of houses on a busy street that, quite honestly, it's a speed zone there.
Those, the people who live in that area have not said that they don't want it there.
You haven't talked to them like I have.
Okay. There's one person who's against it. There's probably four or five that have no problem with it.
So now there's one person. Okay, I don't know. You know, I'm not gonna, I don't want to argue with you. I'm just, I just want to tell you.
You're kidding, right?
Huh?
You're kidding, right?
No, I'm not kidding.
Okay, so, yeah, I think you've kind of wrapped up there. If you have additional questions or concerns, I'm sure Mr. Lee and he can explain to you exactly how this process, what the council was fully aware of how this was going to be presented, and the residents in the area were all contacted. So if you needed some of that backup information, we certainly have it for you.
But, you know, Kathy, just as a last comment, that parking lot was never, when you guys voted on that, that piece of the trail, that parking lot wasn't even in there, that vote, you know? And then when you go to these meetings, the DOT sounds, that go-ahead vote that you guys did was, it was a done deal.
Okay. Well, we did have, we did have information here. We did have meetings here. We had it fully explained to us and the council at that time. It was a different council. Most of, there's folks here that aren't here anymore, but we did fully look into it, and we made a decision, so that's what happened.
I don't want to argue with you, Robert.
Okay.
I apologize if you thought that I was berating you or arguing with you, but I'm just telling you that the stuff I'm saying is.
Okay. Well, if you have additional information you think would be worthwhile to us, then we're always welcome to look at it. So, thank you. Yeah, of course. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Okay, no takers. I will close the public comments section. Thank you, and move along. We do not have any old business. We are into our new business section. So may I have a motion for item number one, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to adopt proposed amendment to an ordinance entitled Tax Stabilization for Elderly Homeowners.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, item number two.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the project authorization letter with the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation for Thomason Avenue Bridge Project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, please.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid 2022-08E, replacement of the Thomason Bridge Project reconstruction to Dayton Construction Watertown, Connecticut, in the amount of $1,296,849.50.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Can't believe it's actually happening. That's been, we've been talking about this forever. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number four, please.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the FAA Airport Rescue Grant Offer Agreement for Robinson Airport in the amount of $32,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number five, please.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refund as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. All right. Takes care of all of our new business items. Item number 12, other discussions of interest. Mr. Lee, do you have anything that you would, anything else that you'd care to bring before us?
No, I do not.
Okay. Before we go, I'd like, we do have an executive session. I would like to, at this time, wish happy Thanksgiving to everybody in the room and to our residents and neighbors. I hope that you have a peaceful time together with family and friends, and everybody stays healthy. All right. May I have a motion to go into executive session, please? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and we will not be coming out to take any action after that, so. Thank you very much.